Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of February 27, 2019. As always, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being broadcast live. It's also being recorded for use at a later date if needed, so keep that in mind. I'd ask you all, please, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I have two thoughts. The boys are in a tournament basketball game and it's almost halftime, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I guess that's not going to work. So Mara, would you give us your students' report?
For the high school, March 7, Whitman and Hanson Dollars for Scholars will be celebrating the 12th annual A Taste of Whitman and Hanson on Thursday, March 7, at the VFW Post 697 in Whitman, 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Up to two dozen local restaurants and food service providers will be offering samples from their menu to the general public. March 8 will be the alumni slash community band concert at 7:00 PM here in the Performing Arts Center. March 1, as organized by the Hanson PTO, this Friday, will be the last day families can order Red Sox tickets. This event will allow students, teachers, family, and friends to come together to watch the Rockies play the Red Sox. March 1 through March 8 will be Dr. Seuss Week, Spirit Week. The spirit days are Friday, dress up as your favorite book character, Monday, Hat Day, Tuesday, Sock Day, Wednesday, Mismatch Day, Thursday, dress up as what you want to be, and Friday, Pyjama Day. And then Panther Socks, order forms can be found on the Indian Head website.
Thank you, Mara. Anyone have any questions? Excuse me. Mara?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of February 6.
Motion to accept February 6 and 13.
Second.
Everyone hear that? The motions for the 6th and 13th. Any discussion on either set of minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Indiana was, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Christine, do you want to start with the expenditures and revenues, please?
Christine, could you please tell us who you are? Because I had a person ask me, who was that woman who got up and spoke? And I said, she's our business manager, so...
I've been here seven years this week, by the way.
Well, you have... I'm going to give that person the benefit of the doubt and say they must have a freshman in the district.
Okay. I'm Christine Suko, I'm the executive business director here at Hanson.
Thank you.
So in your packet, you have a single-page munis report. It's the revenue.
Excuse me.
Just making sure everyone has it.
The single is the first one.
This one right here.
The handout?
Yep.
The really short.
Yeah. Yeah. Revenue's shorter. So if you look at the first column, that's the original budget that we project for the revenue that's going to come in this year. The second column, it was adjusted after the governor's budget came out in the end of January. So then that gives you the revised budget. In the third column, the fourth column shows you the actual revenue we've brought in to date. The town assessments, 75% we've received. We expect one more payment from each town in April. They've paid in full for the capital projects. Medicaid reimbursement, that represents seven months' worth, so we anticipate five more months. Same with chapter 70. It actually came in tonight just before I came downstairs, but it hasn't been posted yet. Same goes for the charter school assessment. The two transportation, the regional transportation and the homeless transportation. We receive one payment in January for the regional transportation, and we typically get the larger balloon payment in June. And if we're going to get anything at all for homeless, we get that in June. The interest income, David estimated $50,000. We're already at $54,165.50, and that's only seven months' worth, so we're going to exceed that. The last two, I typically make those entries at the end of the year, in June. The circuit breaker and the E and D. It's in reserve and then I move it over.
Questions, anyone? Fred?
The circuit breaker went up a little bit last year.
It did. Yes, it did.
But, so the original 735 did not reflect that increase, or didn't reflect that?
Yeah. What happens is, we're usually one year behind in circuit breaker, so this is actually what we received in the prior year. So we had to use some to balance last year's budget, hence why this year there isn't as much offsetting our operating budget.
Anyone else? What's E and D at now? 450?
E and D is 96431, or 96761.
Thank you.
Sure. So the next one is the expenditure report. Again, the first column is the original appropriation. Second column is any transfers or adjustments that, to date so far, approved. So the third column reflects the revised budget. The fourth column is the year-to-date expended, which is actual cash going out the door. The third, the encumbrance column, shows money that's being held until we receive the good of service. I just want to bring your attention to a couple of pages here. You look on page 7. About a third of the way down, you'll see the account 10-220-003-5320. That is actually the subs for the preschool, now that they are on their own. And it's in the hole by $8,702.68. And that reflects through February, so we have a few more months to go. And then also, you look down at district-wide tuition, other schools. That's where we charge Recovery High School. The prior year, we spent $6,000, so that's what was budgeted for this year. But we're over by $13,570 as of right now.
And just for the committee, Recovery High School is the Independence Academy through North River Collaborative in Brockton. We can't deny a student to go to Recovery High School. So if a student is accepted there, follows their course of being sober and follows them, we pay that tuition.
Questions, anyone? Continue, Chris?
Sure. So if you want to go to page 8, oh, yeah, page 8. About halfway down on the page, you'll see district-wide clinic supplies is over by Those are for the AED pads that we have to replace every single year. And we're trying to get all the, we're getting the schools all in the same year, whereas it's been kind of sporadic. That's why that's increased this year. Look down, about halfway down the page, you have the salary reserve is over because that's for retirement buyouts that weren't anticipated for this year.
We had a large one last year that went out. That wasn't budgeted for in that cycle.
Then, of course, page 9. You can take a look at all the special education. The contracted services is over by, just over $103,000. The transportation contracted services is over by just over $237,000. And right now, the sped tuition to other schools is just over by $118,000. And then if you look down to the McKinney Vento, that is also over by $3,400, just That's all I have to bring to your attention, unless you have...
Questions, anyone?
More questions?
No questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
I'd like you to continue on, Bob. So as far as 2020 budget discussions, we left here, I had the opportunity, I was invited to the town of Whitman, to two department meetings with the town administrator and all the department heads. And then the chair, myself, George, Lisa Green, and I believe Mr. LaMontina, one of the selectmen was, and we invited them to a meeting yesterday to talk about a few things. So coming from the department meetings, we got some information from the town. It looks like the town of Whitman is looking for, and I think I mentioned it to you, us at some point having a conversation with our associations and then doing a two-year budget freeze in the town of Whitman, just roughly to give the committee, if there was a budget free, or if there was a wage freeze, the town of Whitman would save close to $800,000 in school salaries for that one year. The town of Whitman is looking at a $2.5 million override. I think that's the number that they're looking for, to help with their budget, and also a debt exclusion for the police station. That was discussed at both department head meetings. Nothing was finalized there. I'm still, we still don't have numbers if those things don't come to fruition. So I can't give the committee what that impact would be. If that impact is a zero for our budget, it would be not good. We're looking at a $3.5 million increase at this point in our funds. Yesterday, at the meeting with Mr. Lyman, Ms. Green, Mr. LaMontina wasn't able to be there, but we spoke. The purpose for that meeting was to discuss, potentially having a discussion with our association. Mr. Lyman asked us at that point, they weren't ready to do that. I believe they were going to meet with the selectmen yesterday and have a course of action of what to look for from the associations. It's going to be up to this committee if you want to formulate a conversation with WHA to look at our contracts. We've looked at our budget right now. Insurance might be down. We've looked at a 5% increase in our budget. It looks like the number might be a 1.5% increase. That was the recommendation. I believe, Christine, in a couple of weeks, they're going to meet here and vote on that. So that'll be before the next school committee meeting. That might be a reduction in our budget. When we talked about special education expenditures, it's to the point of, we were talking of an out-of-district placement already that might be back next year at the tune of $200,000. Okay? So that might knock $200,000 out of our sped budget for 2020. The catch to that, and when Christine talked about transportation, we had a transportation company that was looking to transport this student to his new location at the tune of $450 a day. So it would almost be a wash in transportation over the course of the year at $450 a day. We were able to negotiate, Ms. Matheson was able to negotiate with another company to make it a better arrangement that wouldn't cost us as much. But that sped fluctuation, when I said we were up $1 million from last year, that could drop by $500,000 by the time we appropriate our budget in May. It could also increase. So that's that flux back and forth. So I'm asking the committee at this point to stay true. We don't have real numbers, so to speak, to say, you know, if Whitman can contribute 1% or 2% or 4% or 15%. I know they're still at that zero base. And I know Mr. Lyman was meeting with FinCom and the selectmen yesterday, and I know he's here today, so, and I didn't get to watch it on YouTube last night, so I don't know anything transpired that you could help the committee out in their assessment idea for the next two weeks.
Frank?
The board of selectmen did meet last night, as did the finance committee. The intent is twofold. I will be meeting with the Hanson town administrator and accountant next Tuesday. Tentatively, I have a meeting scheduled for Monday with the representatives from our collective bargaining agreements, but I don't have confirmation for all of that group yet. The key to all of this is what we see for numbers. What happens if we do get an override? What happens if we don't? There hasn't been enough urgency in working those numbers. We did talk about it last night. Next Tuesday, I will be meeting with the finance committee for the sole purpose of working through the budget. We're not meeting with anyone else. We're going to go line by line, and we're going to come up with some suggestions. The biggest part of this process is our ability to sustain what we're doing. And the reason we're talking a two-year wage freeze is because there's no resolution if we do a levy limit increase this year, and then next year, we're faced with another two or two-and-a-half million dollar increase, because it's not attainable. Sustainability means living within our ability to generate revenue. Right now, we generate in new dollars $975,000. If you do the math, you look at the assessment that puts you at level funding, it's far short. If you look at a history over the last three years, the growth just in the school budget would exceed five-and-a-half times what we generate in revenue. So there has to be some type of resolution to this. I question, three-and-a-half times, not five-and-a-half times, I question whether we will have the support for an override unless we can present a clear picture that it will address these problems for several years. We are working on two projects right now. One is a capital plan development. The other is a budget plan development. Those things will help to identify where we are at a given point in time. There's been a lot of attention given to the capital issue. And I can display for you and for anyone that wants to see it, that we've maintained a capital expenditure program over the years. It hasn't been identified as a five-year plan, and part of the reason for that is we don't have revenue predictability to support that. The capital requests that appear on this year's warrant, strictly capital, nothing to do with operating budgets, is over $3 million. We know that's not going to happen because we don't have the money. So as I said, we're going to work next week, and I've already started that process, but we're going to formally meet next week and go through the budgets line by line. We're also going to have a conversation with Hanson to see where they are on this process. And I think one of the elements to meeting and discussing with people whether or not they are willing to forego wage increases is what the impact's going to be. I've got to be able to define that. To go up to somebody and say, look, we want a two-year hiatus on salary increases to build a budget that we can live with is all good and fine, but what's it mean if we don't do it? Unless we have specific numbers, it's going to be very difficult for people to rationalize that. So here we are, I think 65 days from a town meeting, and we're crunching numbers.
Frank, I have a couple of questions. Do you anticipate having numbers before the school committee meets again? We're not meeting on the 6th. We will be meeting on the 13th.
We will have suggested numbers by the time you meet. And those suggested numbers are going to be with and without an override. One hint, without an override, the numbers are going to have minuses in front of them for almost everybody.
My next question's you, and I'm going to ask this to the committee. Jeff, I'm jumping in the middle of your report, but we're kind of in this. We talked, you just mentioned wage freezes for two years or whatever. So everyone watching will understand what that means. It means taking a zero for two years, correct?
It means whatever is being earned this year is what will be earned next year and the year after.
So consequently, you're going to speak with the unions. I'm going to jump right from you, right to the committee. My suggestion are, I would be looking... My suggestion are, I would be looking for direction, obviously, from you, but my suggestion to the committee may be, we should get the bargaining group back together that bargain the contract, or we can do it as a full committee and meet with Kevin and the bargaining team for the teachers' units and all of the other units, and see if we can get in one room and have a discussion. What's your pleasure? Are you more interested in having just the team that bargain the contract, or would the whole school committee like to meet? We'd have to, I believe, go into executive session to do it and then discuss our options here. Yes, Mr. Voice?
This is in urgency. I think we should all be there. And I've always liked the pure positive that Kevin has always given us, and of course, Beth, but certainly, I think, this ranks right up there, and I think we all need to be there.
Any other suggestions? I mean, are you making that motion?
I will make that motion.
Did someone second it?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Bob?
I wasn't going to say anything.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I thought you were going to...
I think it's important that the entire committee meets. My concern is this, and I may sound naive. Here we are at the 11th hour again, like I've said the last four or five years. Was there any indication prior to schools starting, prior to negotiations with the units? Was there any, was there knowledge of how much of a deficit the town was going to be in before we went through and negotiated and ratified contracts? I mean, if this, if this was the...
Yes, I'm sorry. When we voted, when the town of Whitman voted its budget last May, it was made very clear that we were appropriating money from a non-recurring source to fund the cost for debt payments in order to balance the budget. And that, in order to move forward in the following year, we were going to need to increase the levy. That was to balance out. That was not to fund a two-and-a-half million dollar increase in assessment, because that million-two that we funded last year is the bottom line base for this year's budget, and that's a million-two more than we had to spend. And this year, we've generated $975,000 in new revenue. So, even using that number, we're still 225,000 short to start. Now, add two-and-a-half million to that. Where do we sit? It was, it wasn't unpredictable.
No, so, so my concern would be then, if, I mean, I was at that town meeting, and obviously, by the time negotiations started, that was not in front of my mind. I don't think it was in front of the mind of people who were negotiating at the time, I don't think. There could have been a gentle reminder or some type of meeting early on saying that, you know, "Remember what we did at town meeting, and we should be careful how we go through the negotiating process." It's, I don't know if it would improve what had happened in negotiations or not.
Are you suggesting we should have come forward when you started negotiating?
That's a thought, but...
Well, a thought for me would be if you had come to us and said, "We're going to negotiate. What are your concerns?", you would have had that answer.
Okay, so, I guess...
We don't determine your negotiating schedule.
I understand that. So, I guess what I'm looking at is that perhaps, and then over the years, we've talked about meetings with the school committee and the towns to discuss budget implications. And I think this is a good example of how those meetings should start or proceed August, September, so that everyone knows what place we're in. For example, we should try to have an idea of maybe what the fire department needs, what police needs, what everyone needs, so if you look at the total cost, it might be easier for all of the departments to sort of sit down and say, "Hey, listen, what do you think we can do about this particular budget cycle?" I think what's frustrating is that we always get to this point, and I understand the implications of the budget, I understand how that, how that works, but I think I get too frustrated that it always comes down to this. When I was working in another system, it was the same thing. It was a different kind of town meeting. It was a representative town meeting. But, when the school budget came, it always came down to crunch time. Town meeting was going to be in a month, and nobody had solidified anything. And I just don't understand why that's always the case. So, it's more frustration from my part, but I would suggest that prior to, or as early as possible, to meet with maybe department heads and kind of go over what's the, what issues are going to come up for this, for the next budget year.
Fred?
I'd like to just say a couple of things. One, the budget that was passed last year, town meeting, did include the increase, because we had that contained within our budget as it sat. So, it's not, it's not that that's causing this, although part of our contracts and the acceleration of contracts do definitely tilt it to make it more than a nominal increase or the cost of living increase that is given.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Okay, so, that being said, you also look at, well, this year, $3.6 million, unprecedented of an increase for level services. And I can remember last year gasping when it was just over $2 million, and it was whittled back. So, I think there's something, you know, within services that we're needing to provide contractually or legally that are hitting us very hard this year, and it's a little bit of the perfect storm as well. When was the last time, I mean, $3.6 million? That is a gigantic number. When I first heard that number, I was almost on the floor. So, I think it's the perfect storm of a lot of things at the same time.
Ally? Yeah, go, Frank, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify a couple of things. Salaries are an issue. They're not the only issue. The salaries represent 39% of this year's increase. Not a, it's not going to make or break the budget. So, if you take the converse, 61% of your budget is being driven by numbers that either aren't controllable or aren't controlled. And I say the same thing for the town, because we're in the same boat. We all have fixed costs, and we have to deal with those fixed costs. You have some unique things that we don't have to deal with. Sure, we provide services that don't contribute to the bottom line, but we're not mandated to provide some of the things that you folks have to do year after year, under mandate but not funded. So, it's a community problem. It's a, it's a community problem whether we're a regional school or whether we're a one-town system. So, I, you know, I wish I had an answer. I frankly just am troubled by the fact that a simple appreciation of one year can throw a budget so far out of whack that we don't have the ability to fund it. I mean, if you were to ask me, what would the town of Whitman be looking to do, I would tell you, take 75% of our growth every year. But, that's 75%. Wouldn't do much for you, because now we're talking seven, nine, 75.
Call it 750 for the sake of rounding it off.
Seven, you're talking about 750,000 a year.
That's a 5.5% increase in the assessment, which I can remember years that we would have been very thrilled.
Yep. But, the point is, we're at, we're at a, we're at a point where we have to increase revenue to support the operations. But, I can't increase revenue to a degree that it would support a 5, 5.5% total budget growth this year and the same next year. I mean, it would just, it would blow us out of the market. First of all, I'm concerned about getting a levy increase this year. There's, I don't think there's a Pope's Prayer going out again next year and saying, "By the way, we're back." So, whatever we come up with in presenting it to the voters to support is going to have to be something that's sustainable. A one-year fix will not encourage people to support a levy increase. We have to be able to show that by doing this, we're going to, if you use the euphemism, right the ship. I don't know how well the freeze in wages will work. I have some indication of support from some meeting, unions. I have something very close to, "Are you crazy?", from others. But, we're going to have that conversation because it's part of the puzzle. I've heard people say, you know, "It doesn't matter if you're going to increase the levy, increase it in honor of the contracts you've made." And that's a fair argument. You know, we negotiated in good faith three, two-and-a-half years ago, and we made agreements that, at the time, we believed we would be able to meet. But, now, we're facing a financial chasm, and we're trying to figure out how to back away from it. As I said, we're going to meet, we're going to talk about things, and I will be getting back to Jeff with whatever feedback we get. Selectmen, because of scheduling conflicts, are not going to meet till mid-March, but that's not going to slow down our process.
I agree that we all need to do a better job working together, communicating what everybody's needs are, what we're anticipating. That is almost common sense, and why we weren't doing it beforehand is just kind of mind-boggling. As far as revenue, I know this is not really the appropriate place to bring it up, but what we, what the town really needs to do to increase revenue would be attract businesses. That's where we're going to get more revenue from, not all these single-home developments or townhouses. Just wondering what we're doing as a town to attract more business instead of single-family homes to increase revenue. I mean, I've heard it before, that we're not going to get business because we don't have easy highway access, but, I'm sorry, that's a load of waffle. Abington doesn't have easy highway access, and they have Target, Walmart, and we have Dunkin' Donuts and a bunch of used car dealerships. This is a real problem for the town, the schools. Something needs to change. We need to attract businesses that are going to bring in revenue. We need the help for the schools and the towns. I don't know.
All right, Kevin, you've been pretty patient. Thank you.
No, sure, sweet. So, I do think it's important that we meet. I guess the question I would have is, your meetings with the other bargaining units, Mr. Lyman, are they happening like next week formally in the sense of all the units? Have you had preliminary discussions, formal discussions? You alluded to it a little bit. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page and groups don't get pitted against one another. That's why I think it's important that we...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
The meeting I'm seeking to have on Monday will be our first meeting with the collective group. It's my intent to meet and work collaboratively with all of the unions. I'm not trying to do this on a union-by-union basis. That'll take us out till next fall. No, we have not had any discussion. I made it very clear when I approached the selectmen last week to do this, that I had simply reached out to each of the groups to say, "This is a thought." And that's all it was. "This is a thought. I'm going to go to the selectmen. I'm going to seek their permission to engage in some discussion on this." And that's the process. That's the only conversation I've had with the unions.
Are there four unions in town?
Five.
Five, five units altogether.
Frank, as, as you know, before you leave, as you know, we're, we have a drop-dead date that we have to give you an assessment, and part of the problem with that is, once the assessment is given to the towns, obviously, it can only go down, it can't go up.
That's understood.
You know, so, we're going to have to come up with something...
And the assessment, we know will reflect that.
And the window's getting shorter and shorter and shorter. The 13th is coming up, and I believe that's our drop-dead date, Michelle? Or close?
That's correct.
So, consequently, and this is, I'll get shot for saying this, this maybe, somebody might consider kicking the can down the road, but we have a dire situation here. We may have to hold town meeting. Is there any chance of that happening? Back it up.
In order to kick the can down the road, there has to be somewhere to reach for the funds, and it isn't there. So, yes, town meeting can be delayed, but that only puts the region in a more difficult situation.
Naturally.
Because if we don't act until June, and then we have a vote, you're now into July before you know what the answer's on. You're now on a 1/12 budget.
Exactly.
So, certainly, it's, it's my intent to see a question on the ballot, and that question has to be posted at least 35 days before the election. So, we're going to have to make some decisions in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And then, the question will be voted. A budget will be developed and presented at town meeting. It's likely that we're going to end up with a budget that's subject to a successful override, and yes, we're back in the good old days where we have to come back if that fails.
Thank you. I just wanted that explained, so anybody listening would understand the ramifications of which way it could go.
Dan?
Kevin, with it, seeing how we can't meet anyways till Monday, to have the open meeting...
Have to post, yeah.
Would you, you guys be able to meet with us on Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, I think we could rush it, certainly, to meet. One of the things that I would definitely like to, I want to make sure that there's the discussion with the other groups as well. In other words, if there's any type of concessions or agreement, I want to have that information before any discussions that we have. I just want to be on the same page with all the...
Only because that, usually, we take that year or two to do it. We now have less than two weeks to get everything set down. Is Monday work for you, you think?
Well, the only thing, if he's not meeting until Monday, I'd like to go after him.
I was originally thinking Tuesday, just to say him recently.
Next week?
Next week.
There's a bunch of us are at the funding meeting that...
On the Wednesday, so, Tuesday.
Next Wednesday.
If we can meet on Tuesday.
Is everybody available from the committee next Tuesday?
Yep.
Well, yes, Ally?
I'll cancel what I have to do. Yeah, I'll make it.
I cannot make Tuesday.
You can or you can't?
Cannot.
I can.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I can too.
We have to be in this forum, correct?
Yes, that's what the committee wants to come as a committee, so...
Executive session, though. It's executive session.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll follow up afterwards. I'd definitely like to, you know, hear what obviously happened.
All right, tentatively, we'll meet next Tuesday.
What time? Let's, I mean...
Six o'clock, I would think.
Is six o'clock work for everybody?
I won't get back till...
Six or seven?
6:30 or 7:00 would be better for me. I won't be back here till around 6:00.
6:30?
Yeah.
I mean, 6:30.
Compromise, good, 6:30?
Make it work, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. That kind of all goes in with this budget discussion. Mr. Voice?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to speak?
Oh, no. I mean, if, if anything, if I can just add and give you more of what's out there in the real world, when I spent it with Frank and Dan Salvucci back in the 2000s. Ally, you can bring big businesses in, but that's exactly... When I spent it with Frank and Dan Salvucci back in the 2000s, Elliot, you can bring big businesses in, but that's exactly what they are. They're big businesses, and they have demands of their own. We were expecting, I don't know if it was 500,000 or 700,000 in new revenue with new growth. And they were able to whittle down their assessment based on what's around. These people are professionals. They just, they know their stuff. And I don't remember the exact number, but I know it fell underneath like, it was like maybe 350,000 or something. So, yeah, you could have that new money. And that's a great thing. I mean, I think in the 2000s, we had a good benefit of that good money. When I knew growth first went under a million dollars, we were like, wow. But you have to also think, that money doesn't, like, it doesn't get a cost of living increase in a sense. It's just still, if it was, you know, 400,000 back then, it's different than a $400,000 today. Today, you wouldn't probably need 600,000. And it, so that's just one of those things where you often talk about the increase in Chapter 70, or how the per pupil wouldn't be based on a percentage. You have to base things on a percentage. People's cost of livings are based on that. There's step increases. If you don't do that, you don't get to the higher point. But they, they did whittle us down. I remember when Super Stop and Shop, or whatever it's called, on 18. And that was our biggest project. So just a little, just a little background on that.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
You're welcome.
Would you like to continue on? We kind of jumped all around, but that was all within the budget.
I have nothing else on budget right now.
Can I just say, I was just thinking something in regards.
Please tell us who you are, we know Jill, but.
Jill Kane. I live in Whitman, and I teach in Whitman. Just thinking about the, you know, having the budget freeze, the, not budget freeze, wage freeze, right. I know that in the past, we've done something similar. I can't remember exactly, and I'm sure Kevin could tell you guys, or if you remember. I don't remember. It's truly, it's not that important to me personally, to my family. We're willing to give up what we need to for, to help. I know we've given up furlough days. Did we have a wage freeze? We have, right?
2008, 2009, and then I believe it was 2010, 2011, portion reimbursement.
Right. Right. So it's interesting, because you see these things thrown out all over the place, that why teachers wouldn't do that, they wouldn't give it up, we're not doing it. And we have done it. And I think there is a huge portion that would do it again. Myself, I would do it. A lot of people would kick me for saying it, because they are hard no, they wouldn't do it. And I think, yeah, we, so, so we've done it, and we have given. And if we have to give, I think there are a lot of us that will give, and I think there's a lot of us that won't give. And I feel like the reason for that is, it's so tricky as the budget gets tighter, our support and our services in our classrooms get less. So it's like, here you are, you're telling us, I want you to not get a wage increase, but I want you to make your own math curriculum. I want you to make your own, design your own English curriculum, be the social worker, but get paid less. So it's so tricky, again, I don't know what the answer is. But I feel like if you go and you ask the staff and they say no, I wouldn't say it's because they don't want to help. I would say it's more that they feel like we're giving all we can, and every day, we're asked to give more with less. And now, we're getting paid less to do it. So, I think, I'm worried that the outcome is not going to be what we want it to be. I hope it is. I will offer it up. I'll vote on the, I will give up my raise. I don't think everyone will do that. And if they don't, it's not them being selfish, it's them feeling like you're asking a whole lot of us, and we're giving almost as much as we can give at this point. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind. And I imagine the other, if, if the firefighters or the police, I imagine if they were here, they could say similar things. It's, the budget stinks, and it's tricky.
Thank you.
I'm done with budget. If anybody has any question at this point.
Anyone have any budget questions? I know that we haven't done, I think the term was, we haven't whittled anything down yet. But having not seen any numbers, I hate to put us to the last day. I mean, we can discuss E and D if you want to discuss it, but I think, what's your pleasure? I'll put it out to the committee. What would you like to do?
Need numbers.
I think that if we can try and identify where we can be on a reduced budget, where we can quote-unquote whittle, would be a good thing. E and D, you know, is going to be a little bit tough, you know, as far as looking at, what did, what came back last year? Was 400 and somewhat thousand, Christine?
Yes.
Do we have a report as to from what line items that money came back from, and where we're at on those line items this year?
What I can tell you is, 350,000 of that was additional anticipated revenue that we didn't, that we didn't plan for. We got a little more in transportation, we got a little bit more in Medicaid, we got a little bit more in interest. So that, that was the bulk of the money going back. It wasn't on the expense side. We had just over $100,000 in expenditures that was able to go back into the budget. And that was because there was some savings in the health insurance, very small amount. And we were able to, in order to balance the over-budget of the special education, we were able to go in, because we're usually typically a year behind in circuit breaker. So we were able to balance the budget that way. And.
So we balanced FY '18.
Correct.
With.
Seventeen.
Seventeen money, or?
With circuit breaker money. When I first got here.
Right, but the circuit breaker money was from '17 or '18?
Seventeen.
Okay.
So, no, from '18, you're right.
From '18.
Correct. So, but the bulk of that, just over 400,000, was additional revenue that we didn't anticipate. It wasn't the expense side.
And I know, what do we, what do we have keyed in for regional transportation reimbursement for this year? Was it 65% or did we do the 72%? I know we run a year behind on that as well, correct?
Yes, we do. Well, whatever the cherry, whatever the governor's budget came out at, I think it was.
So the governor's budget was 65%.
That's what was put in.
And we should have seen 72%. So there's 7% of 900 and somewhat thousand.
And we still could, and that's what happened last year. We anticipated, I think, close to 70%, and we got 72%. So that, we didn't find that out until June. And that, that's the piece that was able to be put back into E and D. It was mostly revenue. Three-quarters of it, or six, three-quarters of it was revenue.
Okay, so, and, I'm just trying to remember what we picked up. It was 116,000 less they, less something from Chapter 70?
From last year.
Charter schools.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can bring you the exact numbers, but that's the round numbers. Charter school, we might, we might have got a little bit more. But of that, over, of that 430,000 that we were able to put back in E and D, over 350,000 of that was unanticipated revenue. So.
So we're not going to have that this year, probably.
I don't know. I mean, if they end up giving us more in transportation, or in homeless transportation, or Medicaid could come in a little bit higher.
The answer to that, Fred, is it's difficult, as you know, because that money doesn't come in. You don't know until the governor's budget is totally set, until the wrangling up on Capitol Hill gets changed.
Sometimes that's July.
So you really can't spend the money we don't have.
It was after July last year.
That's right. That's why I come back in August and I have you revote the actual dollar amount.
Yep. But no, just, it gets confusing when you're a year behind.
Yes.
To count the revenues for certain things that have gone up.
And the beauty of having the circuit breaker a year behind, just like last year, we were way over in special education. If we weren't a year behind, we would have, we would have been in trouble having to balance last year's budget.
That gives us a little bit of a cushion in our mindset of spending some E and D money.
That cushion has gone down, because we had to balance last year's budget on the revenue that came in the same year.
Jeff, are you prepared with any of this? I mean, I, I understand, you know, we're getting down to crunch time, as we do every year, as Bob says, or Fred says, or we all chime in on that. It always gets down to this.
If, as, as I stated last time, I'd ask the committee to look at the level service budget that we presented. If you get numbers and have to cut an assessment that won't equal a level service, we will look as a team to look at cutting program and service. And the last thing I want to do is cut people. So there are ways, and I don't, I, there will be a savings in insurance. If they, on March 11th, they vote that, there'll be 100 and something thousand dollar savings. But I need to know if it's 3.5 million or 2.5 million. Understand, and Mr. Smalley, you said the 3.5, we're up almost a million dollars in special education, transportation, and placement. If we didn't have that from last year, we'd be at 2.5. And last year's was up three, three and a quarter from the year before. So the target area that we're looking at within, to look long-range, is bringing those kids back. And without finance, without a financial backing to do that, we're going to keep pushing kids out the door, because we can't provide them the services. The gallery talked about social-emotional needs. There was an article that, that I got yesterday from, from a teacher at Whitman Middle School, about the level of social-emotional needs across the country, and how it's affecting teachers and school nurses and things like that. The ideal in some states is two school psychologists in an elementary school. We don't have that. And I'm, I'm trying to earmark what would be sufficient for our community. So I'm looking at the committee. Before I sharpen my pencil, I want to see what we have for numbers, and then I'll go from there, and we'll look at our programs. But anything lower than level service will, will affect our staff. And Ms. Kane said it, we don't give a lot to our elementaries right now. One of our priorities is giving them a curriculum that our students can learn from. We don't have ELA, and we don't have mathematics, and that's at a cost, and we haven't had that. Our elementaries have been kicked down the can for a while. And a commitment that I made to you in my interview process was to look at our elementaries. A question I was asked was, you're a high school guy, what are you going to do for elementaries? It's been a priority here to look at what we've had. And what I've seen is amazing teaching without any supplies. And she said it, the teachers might give back, but they're afraid of giving back and not getting anything to help them teach. We have teachers that go above and beyond. And putting more kids in a classroom because we have to cut staff is going to affect us. And we're in competition. We're, if you looked at our spreadsheet, are, we're getting kids going out to charter schools. We have kids going out to choice placements in kindergarten, grades one and two. And all our surrounding towns, with the exception of East Bridgewater, spend more per pupil than we do. And, and they are all offering full-day K as well. And they are accepting our students as choice. And once we lose them as choice, we pay for them, and we, we don't get Chapter 70 money for them. Our local next-door neighbor in Abington spends a bit more per pupil than we do. Rockland's the same. Rockland's over $15,000 per kid. We're at 12.7.
Oak Brook's 15.9.
So they're all choice districts as well. So if I see the communities of Whitman struggling, a parent might say, I'll just go over the border in Abington and go K to 12 in the new 5 through 12 building in Abington, and not send my kid to the Whitman Middle School that's falling apart right now. So those are the things that I'm looking at, making sure we provide the service that we need to, and make sure we don't lose our students to other towns. We're still, I'm going to ask, if it's on the agenda with, with school choice, we're still bringing kids in. We still have a great product. But if we regress, and I'm afraid of regression, it's taken us four years to get progress. We're still in the bottom fourth third in the state in per pupil expenditure. In our local area, East Bridgewater's lower than us, and I can't find anybody else that's less than 400 or 500 dollars. And I'll share that with you via an email of all the, of the local areas. And I don't want to get into us versus them, but that's what I'm afraid of. Our kids leaving our, our districts and billing us to go someplace else when we could provide the services here. So that's what I'm asking the committee.
Chris?
So to answer your question directly, as one of 10, I am not interested in supporting anything less than maintaining the services we have. Not reducing that by a penny. But I'm one of 10 on a committee, and I'm one of thousands in two communities, right? So I think as we progress further, what we're going to probably have to spend some time doing is understanding the ramifications of if we don't get there. I'm not in favor of it. You know, I think if that's where we go, I'm going to have to make some hard decisions, both in terms of where I am on the committee, the community, where my kids go to school. Those are some hard decisions I have to make, because I am not interested in having my kids go to school for a year with some of the services that I think we may have to reduce. I'm not interested in doing that. And I don't think any parent should be interested in doing that. So that's my position. Having said that, I think there are a lot of folks, we have some folks here, great. We have some folks that watch the meetings. When I watched it, I was viewer 143 of catching up on, on last, great. We have a couple hundred folks that attend town meetings. But this is really about rallying the community with thousands of people that are going to need to come out and support it. And I think they need to understand the ramifications of the lack of that support, if that's what it comes to. They have to understand the consequence of the decision. We're not there now.
Right.
I hear you don't want to go there, I get it. I'm not interested in going there ever. But I think, to be fair, at some point, we are going to have to have that dialogue around. If it doesn't happen, if we get one set of numbers.
I think you should rest assured that this committee and anybody who's watching will have a clear and utter view of what things would look like dependent upon what the monies that are available are. It's, it's the task of the education side of this, to make sure we can produce the best product that we can within the lim, within the means that we are given. And when that time is, we'll let you know. It will not, it'll be cuts everywhere. I was around for the furloughs, I was around for the give-backs, I was around for the freezes. And it looks like I'm back around for those also, for another round. So, everybody, it'll be clear. It'll be clear.
Dan?
Just for the other side, you know, Christine was giving us the year-to-date, we're already in the hole for SPED. So that's something, you know, that I've always tried to watch out and warn people of. We may have to fill that with E and D. So you can't be taking it out of E and D to operate the school system. That's not what it's there for. So we have to be very careful. I know it's an easy fix, but we've been doing this for five, six years. We've implemented MUNIS. Since we've implemented MUNIS, finding money has been coming tighter and tighter, because we can't find it anymore, because the system cleaned it up. That's the other thing. We, when I first came on board, we had over a million dollars in the E and D. And we're struggling to get it back in. We were lucky this year, unanticipated funds came back. We can't keep going down that route. We have to be realistic with the numbers we have. We can't be pretending we're going to find money to replace E and D if we borrow it. You know, we're already going to be in the hole, it looks like, because that doesn't change. And we want you to go negative with SPED. You don't go backwards on SPED. It doesn't, it's not one of those ones you get a magic number, you know? So we have to be very careful on that. And like what Chris was saying, you gotta give them what you want. I mean, it's going to come down to, we can give you the numbers, we don't have numbers, here's the assessment. Because like Bob says, we can only set it once and go down, we can't go up. So you're going to highball it right now if somebody wants to get an assessment.
And we're, we can, we've been, since we presented with FinCom in December, and I showed you numbers in December, we've, we've gone over different things, different scenarios, what, what's there, what's not. Level of service, K to 12, pre-K to 12, what we can do to, to maneuver. So this is not, not new. Starting to lose some sleep and thinking about different ways of, of revenue and cuts without doing it to people. Because, again, being new in this role and getting out and putting hands on every building every week, you see what's there. And I can't anticipate, or I couldn't imagine, putting five more kids in a second-grade class. I see what's there right now. So I can give you things. Once we have some clear guidance, I'm, I've never been willing to make cuts before I know what I'm, what I need to do. Because we gave you, I think, a level service budget that was equitable for what we have this year, without adding anything new. What I told the committee is that we were able to restructure some services with restructuring of the Unit B contract that will provide different types of service for our kids, which I think will be very beneficial. And for us to take some of that away would be disheartening for us right now. That's why I'm not really willing to put paper to pencil right now and, and slash things.
Can you, Chris, again?
Just, just real quick, so I know we've talked about, it sounds like between now and the next meeting, we'll have some firm numbers from Whitman. Have we heard anything from Hanson? Will we be in the same position where we're getting some firmer numbers? Do we need to reach out in any capacity? I don't want to get half of the picture.
I, I think Christine's had a conversation with Hanson. I think Hanson probably wouldn't be able to do 16%, but they're much more in a comfortable range of being able to maneuver where we're.
So you have a sense of some.
I have a sense.
That's, okay.
And we met with Mike and Todd and had a good conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce?
So, and only because I know this, because I, it's 20 years this year that I've been in FinCom or whatever. You know, there used to be this swinging pendulum. I'm not trying to bring bad news to anyone. And it used to be Whitman owed more, next year it was Hanson. But a lot more of the burden, and this is nothing against any particular town, anywhere, is dropping on Whitman. And I think because of that high. town, anywhere, is dropping on Whitman. And I think because of that high imbalance is really what's hel, holding this. Because even as Chris was just asking, and Superintendent was just saying, and I, I believe what I was hearing from Mr. McHugh when he's been here, is they could probably do more because unfortunately they have less, less and less students. It's going to be cer, certainly looking like it's going past that sixty, forty mark. And you kind of wish, you know, it was a little bit different. Yeah, I get to drive out of town of Whitman every day, but not everyone does, you know, to go to work. Not everyone wears a tie in Whitman, and, and I'm not saying anything bad about Hanson, once again. But I think that, that's also what makes it tougher, is just, and I think it just has to be put out there, is, you know, you, we're still at a same fourteen thousand, whatever, we're still working the same jobs. I think the one thing that I think I asked to do, when it was kind of out of the box, was before Dr. McHugh was retiring, I was still on the FinCom, is maybe if we got a thousand of us in the district to give three hundred dollars, that's three hundred thousand. I was the only one that showed up on July first, Michelle knows this, to give, put a check on John's desk. I mean, I called at the McHugh and Three Hundred Club at the time. But you know, these are the other things that, that, now, they may have to come back in the play, and, and we have to think of that. That swinging pendulum just not, isn't there anymore. Hanson's not, you know, burdened with the higher amount. Again, not using bad words or anything, and it's not swinging back to Whitman next year. It's just been on Whitman's side. And I don't know how, how else to straighten that up.
Christine?
Yes?
Didn't you say this year Hanson's up some? I'm not defending it at all. You know, the pendulum goes back and forth because of enrollment.
The pendulum is exactly the same as it was last year.
Was it? I thought it was thirty something thousand dollars different.
No, no change. It's the same. That's the first time ever since I've been here, there's always been a little bit of a swing one way or another.
See? Yep.
So this year, the, the percentage is based on the October first enrollment, we made exactly the same.
That's what I was gonna ask. So everybody knows that this pendulum they're talking about is not something that is imaginary. How it's, goes back and forth from town to town goes by enrollment in the town. On October, we set the enrollment of where the students come from, and that's how the towns are assessed what it costs. So it's strictly a numbers game. It's not something we're throwing a dot at a dot board. It is strictly done by number.
And it's, it's written in the regional agreement how we determine-
Yeah, absolutely.
The cost.
Yeah.
The percentage cost to each town.
So I, I, I guess I still don't have a clear and concise idea of what we want Jeff to do. I mean, he's telling you, he, he doesn't have the numbers tonight. He basically said he's presenting a level service budget, and until we get the numbers, he doesn't wanna cut. Is it the committee's decision to decide what we wanna do with E and D right now, or do you wanna put this until the thirteenth on the drop dead date? We're gonna have more information on the thirteenth, because as Frank said, he's meeting with unions, and as you saw this evening, this whole committee is meeting with, gonna meet with the union. So that may give us a better idea of where we are before we start any of this process. That's something we have to think about. Bob?
I would say wait. We've waited this long. That'd just be my opinion.
Just one thing, Jeff, could you, worst case scenario here, two million dollar hit, can you tell us what that will do in the next meeting?
If it's, if it's strictly people, sixty-five thousand dollars a person.
No, I mean, if we, if we had to come up with a budget that was two million dollars short, what we need, I would like to, you know, because I, I wanna know the worst case scenario, so the people know what's gonna happen.
It's, it's people, right off the top.
Yeah, we can do that. So, so you're, you're asking if it's-
Yeah.
Zero, or a million? See, and, and sure, no problem. If you're asking, you can have it.
Yeah. Just so we know, like, we're, we're losing people, but what are we gonna lose with those people? What people are gonna be, you know, what type of, you know, services for these children are we gonna be losing?
Poor.
Yeah. It'll, it'll be across the board. It'll be K to twelve, where we're at.
I think that's important for people to realize.
In mandated areas where we need special education services. You know, we'll look at that. We're, we're gonna look at cutting program in the areas that we can, and look, servicing our kids the best we possibly can. But if you're looking at a two million dollar hit, it's pretty extensive.
Well, I think what Frank said to us is kind of what we're trying to mirror in the fact of, maybe we should even whittle it down to what each percentage at two hundred four thousand or whatever one percent equals to, what each percentage is gonna start lopping off, and where your priorities for that. And I know that's a ton of work, but I mean, we're talking about students and education and us making a decision for the, for the communities. I think that we may be better do it by two hundred thousand dollar.
Absolutely.
Do whatever you'd like. So you want two hundred thousand dollar increment?
Fred, I'm gonna give you one.
Yep. But, you know, I just want, up to like a worst case scenario, so people can realize.
Yeah, but, and what percentage? Like, so we're-
So the town knows, this is what's gonna happen if we don't get this. This is what we're losing.
We don't want them to know on the day of the town meeting. We want them to know ahead of it.
Just so everybody knows, when we, we've done that before, and we did the à la carte menu, when we went to like an override or not an override, and the à la carte menu then did cause, well, I'd like this back, but not that. I'd like that back and not that. And, and there are people who, me being one of them, Jeff being another one, and the people that we work with, who have been paid to make those decisions about the best interest of students. When you make an à la carte menu, that is a difficult way to also educate children.
And we don't wanna go that route anyways. I mean, we have to tell the people for five years, we gotta, we gotta fix.
My ask again is then, my ask again is, I'm a rules-based guy. My ask, do you wanna add two million dollars? Do you wanna three point five million dollars? Do you wanna add two hundred thousand dollar increments? What do you want?
Two hundred, whatever. As long as we get something that-
We can do that. We can, we can go from here at sixteen and a half all the way down.
Because, you know, when we finally set what we're gonna be doing and bring it, you know, give it to the towns, what I, what I want to happen is, you know, we, we realize what we're gonna be doing before we do that, and we have to, like Frank was saying, we have to be able to do this. So this is gonna happen for the next five, ten years, people.
Mm-hmm. No, I don't disagree.
We're not going the way we want. We're gonna be going the way we don't want.
I guess my ask would be based on experience, though. So that's what happened. You have this meeting. You put it out at two hundred thousand dollar increments. You then get ten phone calls from the person that doesn't want that at that level, they want that at that level. Now, that might not be in the educational reasoning that we came up with, but then, does that matter anymore? And that's the concern that I think I have, and the concern that we all should have, and the concern that the community should have.
Well, hopefully it's projected by the way you guys would see it. Not with one person, two person might think, this is better than this.
Look at it, a big, big picture.
I think to, to chime in on that with the judge, these decisions are gonna be very, very difficult. And in order to keep the community in tune to just how difficult they are, it's not like threatening, because I don't want it like that at all. I want it to be, these are what you have. Here's what you are, here's what you're voting on. I understand if you got ten phone calls, I, I get that. And, and all of us as representatives and voting members of this committee may get, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make that decision and send you guys marching with those orders. That's, that's all I'm saying. So it's not gonna be a good thing to do. Fred, I'm sorry.
All right. What I would like to see is a budget whittled down and ask you to get creative and geniative, et cetera. Again, I'm speaking for myself, as Chris was speaking for himself. In good conscience, I cannot set an assessment that's going to be any less than level services. That being said, what I'm hopeful for is there are areas in this budget that we can find ways to save some money and whittle some things away, combine some classrooms, combine some people. I don't know. You folks are the absolute professionals. I am not an educator, and I'm not qualified to tell you how to educate our students. But we do have to set the assessment. I can only go by your recommendation in knowing that, okay, now, health insurance came in at one and a half percent. So it's gonna be a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase from last year instead of a two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase. So right off the bat, let's-
Once that's voted.
Okay. There's a hundred and fifty grand, you know, we're looking good.
Correct. We can do that.
Okay. What else can you find there? E and D is an important safety net. But it's also, and I'm just being devil's advocate here, it's also something we haven't used in ten years. Well, I wanna make sure that we maintain a little bit of a safety net in going into the full realization that we may not be replenishing it to the level that it was this year, but we are in a crisis. And that being said, all of those things still probably won't be enough for the towns, because the town still has to be able to raise and appropriate enough money. They still have to be able to have a levy lifted and fit all the cogs in, and a wage freeze going into all of that. Hopefully, that puts us all into a solid place. But I would like to be able to say to people in towns, taxpayers, residents, and parents, that while we're providing the absolute services that we need to provide, and we found a couple ways to cut corners and to do things a little bit differently. And I'm just hoping that we can find something like that in there. You know, as evidenced by all my little highlights and cheat sheets and whatnot, I stay up and try and think of these things.
Before we get a little bit further down the road, Fred, I think, maybe I'm confused. We've been hitting E and D for the last ten years.
Yeah.
Right, but we've never had to use it, in other words, during the year. In other words, we've taken money out of E and D.
Okay.
Okay, to fund our budget.
Yeah.
Okay, and left a little safety net there. Then we've replenished it. Then we've taken money from it. Then we've replenished it.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, it's money that we've never had to use, 'cause that, God forbid, day hasn't happened, that we've needed that extraordinary repair or had that extraordinary bill, et cetera. And I do fully understand, we're two students away in residential placements and some other things going bad from having to be at it. But at the same time, you know, you have your savings, you know, you make sure that, okay, if your roof goes, you have money to fix your roof. But then what do you do if the perfect storm happens? I don't know. Maybe you borrow the money or whatnot, 'cause your roof goes, now your heating system goes, the refrigerator goes, and the AC's out. What do you do?
Exactly. But what I'm saying, I, we're on the same page with this, but I don't want anybody to think that we haven't hit E and D. We're hitting it for five, we hit it for seven fifty one years.
Seven fifty a few years ago.
And, and the good, the good part is, and I want everybody to understand this, E and D sometimes gets replenished, as we said, in June or July, when the governor's budget comes out, and that is another, but we can't spend the money we don't have. Because if it doesn't, we're in trouble. Bob, I'm sorry.
I'm finding this whole conversation rather disheartening, because having taught for a good number of years, I've heard the same thing. We might have to cut staff. We might have to cut programs. Who is going to stay? Who's going to leave? Salary has always come up before too, as far as, you know, do you wanna take zero? What's the best thing to do, so on and so forth. It's been discussed for years after years after years. And I think I look at it in the terms of having been in the classroom for a number of years. I know what that impact will be, and I would never wanna see that. And secondly, as a school committee member, I think our charge, or my charge, is to make sure we do the best for the students. We're a public school. I've said this a hundred times. We're here to educate everyone. And when we get to school choice, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, when that first came up, and I know how it's been a positive experience for us, but my fear was exactly what you talked about a little while ago. I'm gonna go here, I'm gonna go there, and everyone starts competing for the same dog. So I'm gonna look at the budget, what I think should be, should be best. I'm a little afraid if you go item by item like George says. I, I know what that's like. People start to pick at it. It's not going to be an easy decision to make, but I think we have to think of what our charge is. I have to think of how important education is. Education is not cheap by any standard. And I think people have to keep that in mind. And I think if they want a good, I shouldn't say good, if they want an excellent school with excellent teachers, which we have right now, that could diminish if things get bad. So just a little frustration on my part, having taught for a number of years, I've been on this committee for a number of years, like I, every, you hear this all the time. It's like flashbacks to Prop two and a half, and Prop two and a half came through. Years ago, there was a question three about school funding. So I don't know what the answer is, but I understand educators' point of view, the teachers in the classroom, and I know what my role is on the school committee.
Okay.
Just, just real quick, 'cause I appreciate Fred's point on the E and D, but two really important points. So I agree we haven't had to hit it, but I also think we're in unprecedented times. We've talked about some of these increases, and you hit it, right, special education, two million dollars just this year. So, and the, and what we don't have, you were starting to go there, we don't have a credit line, right? You, you're, you have a problem with your roof at home, yeah, maybe you get a loan. The E and D is our loan. There is no, we, we can't get a lifeline anywhere else. So we gotta be very careful, given where we are with some of these huge fluctuations in costs and expenses that are coming through. It's not like, uh-oh, we have a bill, who are we gonna call to borrow the money? It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. That is E and D. So we gotta be really careful as to what we leave in, in E and D, just given where we are.
Sure. I'll say, oh, okay. So to quickly summarize, am I hearing that we're gonna push this off until the thirteenth and see what, how sharp you guys can get your pencil, and we're gonna make that decision in the final night? Is that what the committee would like to see? That's kind of what I was asking when we all jumped in.
Unfortunately, yes. Yes.
Fred, is that-
That's fine. Let's, or unless we wanna vote a safety net right now, 'cause God forbid we get ten inches of snow and have to cancel the meeting. If that's the drop dead date, if that's forty-five days before town meeting.
You come in.
You can come in anyway. Yeah.
We have to set an assessment anyways.
Yeah, but let's say there's no power. I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, the contingency, we can set, we can set an assessment right now as a placeholder, so to speak.
I have four-wheel drive. I'm good.
Fred, you're gonna have to come out with the plow and the truck.
Plow is out.
We'll be here. All right. So having said that, I think the, what we're telling you-
Got it.
Get it done?
You got it. You got it.
Do your job, so to speak, a patriot's phrase.
Do some more. We'll do some more. We'll present to you folks where, where we're at. And we'll, we'll have the list. And it won't be itemized by people. It's gonna be areas. You know, what I don't want is to put it out with people and lose folks, because both George and I lived through a budget cycle where we were gonna cut, and we were gonna pink slip, and it never came to fruition. And each of us lost valuable new teachers who were afraid, and we never even got to the pink slip. But in a meeting here, we talked about position cuts. So we'll talk about where we're at and what it would mean, but not specifics, as far as first grade, second grade, high school, wherever. You know what I mean?
Just X amount of teachers.
Because I want, I wanna make sure that we don't lose valuable people who are afraid, 'cause other towns are recruiting them. Thank you. Kevin? Endorsement on, on funding?
Yeah. Trying to make this short and sweet, and it kinda goes in with it. You, you may recall, the committee may recall, a few years ago, there were a number of question ballot initiatives and other things that came across. The last one that I asked you to endorse had to do with the charter schools and, and looking at ways in which to not increase the, the numbers. This one was brought up at the last meeting by Senator Brady, who's a co-sponsor on it, and then also about fifty-one towns so far have signed in. So I believe you do have this in your packet. There are two things. One is called Fund Our Future, Building Public Schools and Colleges Our Students Deserve. And then the, essentially the resolution, it's entitled Fund Our Future at the top, Resolution in Support of Increased Funding for Massachusetts Public Schools Through the Promise Act. And so what I, what I'm asking the, the committee to do is basically endorse it. And right now, you'd be one of fifty-one schools and Board of Trustees and other agencies who have signed on. And kind of the idea is that since two thousand fifteen, with the study that was done, bipartisan study, we realized that the foundation formula certainly is, is not sufficient. And the plan was to essentially adopt the resolutions of the committee. And the idea would be is that if, you know, accepted and essentially made in a law, it would put another billion dollars basically in, in funding circulation. And what that would mean, based on the Senator, Center for Policy Research, MTA, and others, is Whitman Hanson would get a check for nine hundred and nine- is Whitman Hansen would get a check for nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars, uh, five hundred and fifty dollars. So essentially, close to a million dollars if we had, uh, the funding formula changed. So what I'm asking, uh, the, the committee to do is basically endorse that. And, uh, what that would mean is that your name would be attached to it along with mine, and it would be part of the, the PR campaign through WHAA, MTA and others essentially say, these are the schools that have signed on to support. Um, both Representative Cutler and then also Senator Brady have, have endorsed it or spoke about it last time.
Kevin, if we vote in the affirmative, can I have the check?
I'll be, I'll be more than happy. And, uh, I, I think in the past you've asked Senator Cutler for a check. I actually have the check right now.
Isn't negotiable.
So we can continue discussion. I'll have to take a motion to endorse.
Second.
Fred.
The, uh, Promise Act. Uh, the the portion that you're talking about, the nine hundred nineteen thousand, that would be subject to the phase in of charter school, if I'm not mistaken, and only due to that part. Nothing to do with Chapter Seventy and the remuneration of the foundation formula.
As, as far as I'm concerned, this would be, or as far as I, I know, this would be part of a, a, essentially an implementation over a four-year period.
There are four specific, uh, ways that that, uh, committee recommended. Two of those ways, you don't get that nine hundred nineteen thousand dollar check.
Okay.
Uh, so it's only by two of the ways, and it's only if they adopt to redo the way the charter formula works. And it's only in guesstimate.
Right.
As far as anything goes with that nine hundred nineteen thousand. Um, and this is myself personally, I'm more in favor of trying to make headway where it would act, where it would benefit us here.
Sure.
Uh, as opposed to changing the foundation formula, which would not benefit for us at all, uh, so to speak.
I, I, I think there would be some areas that.
We're four point three million dollars in the hold harmless. It's gonna take a lot for us to be able to get past that.
Step in the right direction, maybe.
You know, as I think Chang Day is that, uh, you know, who actually wrote.
And then, uh, a number of schools have signed on.
She's no longer the chair, if I'm not mistaken. It's now Senator Lewis.
Okay.
Uh, who is actually looking for some innovative ways of trying to boost funding, uh, for us.
If, if it does, if it does help you, uh, some of the schools in the area, including Brockton, Dennis Yarmouth, Holbrook, Marshfield, Middleborough, Norton, Seekonk, um, Waymouth, and then some of the, uh, Massachusetts regional also, uh, signed on or adopted.
Any other questions for, uh, Bob?
Well, if there's a possibility, I would say go for it. We have really nothing to lose, from what I can see. I, I understand Fred's saying there are four choices. If they take the two right ones, we're good. If they take the poor one, we're, we haven't lost anything.
The only thing, the only thing to count to that is if they feel that they've done something, and now they say, well, okay, we did this, you know, that's what we have to lose. Instead of saying, hey, wait a second, help everybody. Don't make a stand. Uh, the health insurance part of that that they've addressed is they've gone to recognize GIC rates with Mayflower. It doesn't help us.
Well, again, the, the idea of actual versus estimates, right, that, that's kind of the, the reference to, uh, both the sped funding, the, uh, English learner piece, is to get actual numbers rather than approximates, right, as far as the, the funding piece.
Yeah, the numbers are actual instead of guesstimate.
Correct.
That was kind of the essence of my question. I don't know if Christine or anyone else has looked at this, but how real is that nine nineteen? I think that's kind of what we're talking about because that's.
Oh, it's a roll of the dice.
Right.
Doesn't hurt.
Again, what, what I'm, what I'm basically asking for you, right, is essentially is the, the endorsement and that, especially for, uh, kind of public relations that you would, you would sign on for, you know, to the extent of, of what that meant, uh, for the committee or the, or the district, maybe that would be determined. But I definitely think anything that would help bring either additional funding in some capacity would, would be better than, than not.
Anyone else? Have them, Fred?
I just want to say that it, it could also hurt us in other capacities in different things that other groups are lobbying for, uh, more specific to regions, et cetera, to have this go through.
That's why I, I think a lot of the, uh, larger, more urban districts are.
I think MTA is behind it.
Yeah, yeah, part of a coalition, yeah, number of groups.
Anyone else? I have a motion in a second to endorse the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, actually, right? Is that what you're calling?
Yeah, it's, uh, basically, um, a resolution in support of increased funding for Massachusetts Public Schools through the Promise Act. That's the official language. I can read the resolution, I assume you, you have it.
And pardon me, Cap?
Did you want me to read the resolution? I, I assume you have it, but, yeah, that's, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Read away?
Read away.
Okay, here we go.
We have, huh?
Yeah, no, no, you, you do have it, but I didn't know.
Oh, okay, all right. As long as everybody's got one, we're good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution? All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So at some point, we can get a signature and go on.
All right.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, the next item is, uh, memorandum of understanding with North River. Um, that's in the packet. It's very simple. Uh, we were approached, uh, spoke to Ryan Morgan, the director of Independence Academy at North River, in an effort to help them, uh, achieve a grant. We're gonna partner with North River. It's not gonna cost us a nickel, but it's, North River's gonna provide, or Independence Academy is gonna provide services and intervention services for our students ages thirteen to seventeen. If there's an eighteen-year-old, they'll do it. Uh, Dr. Jones, it's primarily a high school initiative. North River's gonna come in and look, and, and try to do some prevention with some of our kids that are at risk for substance abuse. In return, um, members of the counseling staff is gonna work on a case, be a case manager if a student ends up over at North River. Just an FYI for you folks. Again, it's nothing financial. North River has applied for this grant. It's good for our kids, especially in the fact that we're looking at prevention services to keep kids off of, of alcohol and, and illegal substances, and they're also having a focus in on vaping, which if you're looking at the news media right now, it's, it's bigger than it's ever been, and it's very problematic, and, and health issues are, are coming out from that. We still have quite a few students here in district, uh, who are trying, who are doing it, and I would say are hooked on it. If there is a hook to it, and hopefully, uh, a partnership with Independence Academy will help resolve that, or, or help to resolve to that. So that's just an FYI for you folks. Uh, any questions on that?
Okay.
I'm all set, Bob.
Doesn't need to be voted?
No.
Michelle?
Does it, it doesn't need to be voted, right?
Okay.
No, it wasn't a voting item. It was just an FYI for you.
Does anyone have any questions for superintendent? Capital Project Warren Articles. If you look in your packet. There are Warren Articles.
For Hanson.
Yes. I need to obtain a motion to accept as printed. I knew you, I knew you were gonna do that. Okay.
Can I just ask one thing, Bob?
Yes, go ahead.
There is one piece here that, um, you do have to take a vote and read the actual language, and that is to authorize us to borrow an admitted, okay, that's it.
Yep.
And I'll read it.
Thank you.
To authorize borrowing and incurred debt under MGL, small c, seventy-one, small s, sixteen d in the amount of five hundred thousand for the purpose of to pay costs of designing and carrying out HVAC improvements at the Hanson Middle School. Phase two, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, set amount to be funded by the town of Hanson in accordance with the regional agreement. Does everybody understand what the motion in the second is? It's the document is printed and as I read, the authorization to borrow from the town of Hanson. Any further discussion?
Please, you need a motion in a second for that one, because you made a motion in a second for the Warren Articles.
Including this.
Everything together?
Mm-hmm. Everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. School choose, choice.
We want them to choose here. Um, so I'm asking the committee, this is annual, we started choice, I don't know, six, seven years ago. Currently, we have sixty-two students at the high school that are school choice students. Um, some are from other towns. Most of those sixty-two are students that, um, have moved out of district and chose to remain in the high school with their peers and with the education that we provide them. I would ask the committee to keep school choice open at grades nine and ten only, and for students who are already enrolled and wish to stay uh, for the school year nineteen twenty, um, moving forward. Uh, last year we did twenty sophomores, twenty freshmen. We did not hit those numbers, um, throughout the course of the year. Again, the bulk of the students that stay are sophomore or junior whose parents move to Holbrook or somewhere else, they want to stay and finish their education. Uh, again, sixty-two, sixty-two students, uh, average student, we bring in five thousand dollars. If students are on an IEP or a plan, they can bring in as much as thirteen to eighteen thousand dollars. And that doesn't drain on our program. It's not an out of district. It's services that we already provide with the special educator in the, in the building. So I'd ask the, the committee to keep that open.
I entertain a motion.
Some will.
Discussion, go ahead, Fred.
Quick question. So for new entries only in ninth and tenth grade?
Correct.
What if somebody moves in their junior year and wants to come back for their senior year?
We, we've taken a kid on a case-by-case basis like that. If they've been in district, moved out and, and came back, we, we've done that. But new students only in grades nine and ten. And the purpose for that is, we wanted to make, have a, a benchmark, a benchmark before they ended up taking MCAS exams. Or if a, a junior came in who was not really on track to graduate, we wouldn't have time to help that student graduate. Uh, we've had choice students here, uh, who have also moved to our community evening program and have successfully completed that as well. So, it's been a positive for us.
Can we limit, uh, a school choice to, you know, for an eleventh grader perhaps, you know, to have successfully passed MCAS?
I, I'm not sure. What do you, I don't, not sure.
In other words, is the holdup MCAS or for graduation for credit?
So, so the law is if you open it and you have a slot, you take that student no matter what. So if we are open to grade eleven and a student from, you know, Carver decides they're gonna apply here, they could have straight F, but if I have a slot open and it's open, I have to take that student, okay? You can't pick and choose who you want to do that.
Whereas nine and ten leaves you.
Nine and ten gives us a little bit more opportunity to get that student back. We have, most of the choice students who've come in here as freshmen and sophomores have done very well here because they've, they've choiced to come here for a specific, specific reason. They've had a bad experience somewhere else. They've done relatively well. And sometimes if they don't have a positive experience, they go back to their, their ascending school, so no harm, no foul.
Chris?
Is this a policy that's been established before and there's like a term to it that we revisit, or is?
Every year we have to reopen or close. So if you were to decide to close for the nineteen twenty school year, the students who stay here, still stay, we wouldn't admit any, any new students this year. So it's something that we opened. It was something that I brought from West Bridgewater. If you look at West Bridgewater's DOR report, I want to say roughly a million dollars out of their school budget comes from school choice. They were that small of a community. When we brought it here, we started opening, and we fund, Christine, how many teachers? A half dozen teachers through school choice? So that's part of our, it's not in our budget funding, so we're not, those would be six teachers that over time we would lose. So the, the choice kids, and we've kept it at the high school because you can diffuse students throughout the high school. Sixty more students in the high school is nothing. If you put sixty at Hanson Middle School, there would be a burden on the class size. You can diffuse those through the twelve hundred that we have here.
Anyone else? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, and you understand what you're voting, right?
Yep.
To continue on with school choice, ninth and tenth grade.
And, and students who currently stay and move out.
Right. Everybody understands? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Um, in your packet as well, uh, we're lucky enough to be selected, um, for due to the Massachusetts Youth Risk Survey, um, by DESI. As, as always, we show you the surveys that Massachusetts selects us to do. Um, and we report out, this is something that's gonna be at the high school. Chris, I don't know if you want to get up and he's lucky enough to have to do the survey at the high school level for next year.
This is great. We get to do another survey. The survey gives us information on substances and different things that students are exposed to, and they give us like thirty-day windows, past year windows, things like that. We get information back. It, um, right now it's just above the ESPTR survey that we already give to the ninth graders and the tenth graders this year. So we get a whole bunch of data on things like alcohol use, drug use, um, how often, how frequent, and so forth. So it, it's fairly simple to do. Um, the organization of it is the biggest part, the logistics of where you're gonna do it, with what students and what classrooms and when. Um, but right now our dean of students is putting that together and in, in, uh, contact with them, and he'll be setting it up.
The eighth grade version, just so you know, is what you voted on at the last two school committees ago, because Whitman Middle School is also selected.
Chris, can you just tell the committee what ESPTR is?
Yeah, it's a, it's a screening for ninth and tenth graders this year that they, they go down to the nurse, and they can do it in the nurse or the health classes, but, uh, basically here the nurse does it. Um, and it asks a series of questions, a battery of questions for students for different types of abuse, substance abuse. Um, some, some social emotional issue questions are on there, and that if they hit a certain level, um, but it's mostly, like I said, towards, towards drug abuse. Um, if they hit a certain level of questions they answer in the affirmative to, then they're referred to one of our adjustment counselors um, to undergo some further discussion, some, hopefully get them into some preventative treatment. And, uh, the only hitch with that is that they can't necessarily divulge that information to the parents. So it's really having the kids in a, in an anonymous or a confidential atmosphere identify so that they, they can receive some additional help at school from one of our adjustment counselors.
That was another mandate from the state, I believe in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen. So the nurse has to screen in our school, six hundred kids a year, um, and ask them a series of questions. We didn't have to hire an, an additional nurse, but that takes the nurse out of service different, at different times of the year, and we have to report that every year to the state. So I just wanted the committee to be clear what, what ESPTR was. It's not just filling out a form. It's actually having a, a five to eight-minute conversation. They, they give out specific guidelines with six hundred students each year regarding substances.
I entertain a motion to accept.
Some will, second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you.
I figured I'd stay up here.
I'm okay with that.
And I'm, I mean, just if I could start and just say this publicly, because I'm, I'm not really good at keeping my mouth shut when um, something comes across me, but one of the reasons I decided to apply for the principalship here at the high school Whitman Hansen is because of the educational vision of Mr. Simonak and Mr. Farrell. And, um, the, the reputation they have for moving education forward, um, the way it needs to be. And, and the experiences I've had in, in difficult budget times, because this does happen in other towns um, and with other committees and timings and things like that. Once you, I, I would just, I just have to say this out loud, once you open a budget up to à la carte choices, as staunch as people want to be, um, people have their own agendas and then do pick from different things. And there's a very real threat to the idea of even when that à la carte is put in a, put in a fashion where it addresses the vision of the educational leaders and it addresses the priorities of the educational leaders, um, quite often that gets carved out from underneath the educational leaders, and that vision gets eroded and unable to be fulfilled because of the à la carte piece. So I just, you know, I just would like, that's a, two lonely seats sitting up there. I just wanted to voice my opinion on that and voice my support for these two gentlemen, who are one of the reasons that I decided to come here, because of the vision that they have. And I'd hate to see that erode.
You might get you too. You might get you too.
Give me another half hour.
Keep going, Chris.
I could leave a mark. Okay.
But I, I just, you know, I, I tend to not be able to keep my mouth shut when I, when I have some serious feelings about some things. Onto the program of studies real quick. There's a lot of, a lot of makeovers that have to be done as far as moving courses around and shifting courses around, um, subject to curriculum frameworks. I'll just go through that list that you have. I believe there's twenty-one numbers on there. I'm not gonna hit every number. If you look at one through three, those are courses that have been added in an effort to broaden the scope of electives available to students. If you look at four and five, you'll notice that we renamed Intro to TV Production to, uh, Video Production because TV and radio is pretty much outdated, and that's one of those facelift things. facelift things. And then we added the course WHTV News and Broadcast because that's more realistic and it reflects what those students are doing in that class with the video broadcast they do. Six and seven, those are added to reflect more diverse set of options for students in the subject of art because they're moving into some of these different things, is mindfulness and so forth. Number eight is one of the bigger changes. It's the Algebra II/Pre-Calculus Honors Course. This course is being added and it pretty much closes the loop for students that are in that advanced track towards AP Calc so that they are really exposed to every piece of math along the way and they're more prepared to take AP Calc and be successful in AP Calc by the end of it. Nine and ten, they've been removed because the pre-calc, the pre-calc academic is not really labeled right. That's more, and you know, some students sign up for that thinking it's an academic level course. That's more of an honors level course and even higher than honors. And the new course, number eight, pretty much makes that useless to half because it picks those pieces up. The Applied Mathematics Course is not going to be needed anymore because of the addition of number eleven, which is the Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications Course. That course has been added to better serve all students of all levels. So when a student gets out of Algebra I and they're not quite prepared for Algebra II or the full course content of Algebra II, they take this, which gives them the full breadth of the concepts they've learned in ninth and tenth grade, but it has very hands-on practical applications for math. It's a lot of financial literacy in that course. And so that the students learn real-world applications of math and basically answers the question, why are we doing this? And so we're going to add that, or we'd like to add that. And then we're removing Running a Restaurant, the Courtyard Cafe, because that's already taken care of. That's no longer needing to be labeled that. It's already taken care of in the other culinary courses. All you need to do to understand that is come to one of our restaurant days. The culinary courses cook and run lunches for the staff and faculty. The, we also would like to remove computer apps. It's known as computer applications for the twenty-first century, but we're removing that to make way for a pilot that we're running this year with financial literacy. We're going to put, without adding any more staff, we're moving towards making financial literacy a graduation requirement, which will be for next year. But to do that, we want to run the following year. To do that next year, we want to run a pilot. So we want to put those students into financial literacy, but to get those sections, we had to cancel out computer apps. Computer applications is just what it sounds like. It's Excel, Word, all of those things. Those are going to be folded into the class, so if you're going to be doing something, you're going to be using Excel or Google Sheets. So you'll be learning that skill practically, hands-on, doing things instead of just sitting there and learning about it. So that'll be folded in, the students won't be losing that material, but it'll be, we have to get rid of those sections to make sure we don't need extra teachers for extra sections. Fourteen through twenty-one, all of those additions and deletions are reflecting the most recent changes in the mass curriculum frameworks for social studies. We have to move civics down to eighth grade, so that means we have to make some adjustments at the high school with US one, US two, and you'll see those additions as we come. And that's it for the program of studies.
I entertain a motion to accept the document of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty High School Programs of Studies as in the document.
Some will.
Second.
Discussion. Would anyone like to discuss any of the one through twenty-one? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? E. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next thing on your agenda is winter school. Winter school is basically the idea of taking summer school and moving it into the winter to head off a student failing midway through the year who has no light at the end of the tunnel. So by the end of first semester, they know that they're pretty much sunk for the year. I wouldn't want to be a student in my own class if I had no hope of passing for the year come January. So what this does is, the teachers have, or the departments have taken their courses, these courses, and they've selected the most important points out of those courses. And we've put them into Edgenuity, which is a computer-based program for curriculum. And they use it for credit recovery and so forth. So what they do is they take the most important parts, they put them into a credit recovery course, and then the student, for a period of six weeks, just like summer school, takes this more specific, I should say, set of lessons that reflect what they need to master in semester one, that clearly they didn't because they got a failing grade. So they take that for six weeks at the end of semester one and in the beginning of semester two. If they pass that portion of that course, their failing grade is moved to a sixty, which is the lowest passing grade you can get for a course. So if they failed first semester, the whole idea is they get the concepts they need to be able to be successful in the second semester. Because if you fail the first half of Bio, odds are you're not going to pass the second half, especially if you failed it with a fifty. Now you're supposed to get a seventy-five or an eighty to pass it for the year. That is not going to happen. So it gives them the concepts, it retains the integrity of the grade because they still have to complete the work at a passing level on Edgenuity. And then they're able to move forward. Where this has been implemented before at my previous school, we had passing rates of ninety and ninety-two percent of the students that completed it, passed for the year. It gives students basically the opportunity to pass it for the year and not have to go to summer school to try and make the credits. What I'm looking for from the committee, you have a job description in front of you. I would love for you to approve that so we can get this underway. We are all loaded up and set to go with forty-four students and three coordinators. It's done after school. The students have to take all their, the students have to take their pre-tests and their summative assessments here at school under the guise of the coordinator. The coordinator has to unlock those assessments for them. Currently, we're working with Edgenuity and our tech department because they can create a secure browser so that it locks the browser when they log into Edgenuity so they can't go to any other websites to find answers for the summative assessments or the pre-tests. That's all run by the coordinator, so the integrity is there for the courses and what they need to learn. They are encouraged to work outside of school because what happens is, due to credit recovery, they take a pre-test. They have to get a seventy percent on that pre-test to pass through the lesson. So if they get a seventy percent on the pre-test, the lesson is collapsed, they move on to the next lesson. If they do not, they have to go through the whole lesson, which includes activities, quizzes, things like that. Those things, they do not have to get unlocked by the winter school coordinator, just the pre-tests and the summative unit exams. Once they complete it, they're done for the semester.
I entertain a motion on pot B of this vote to accept with the job's description as provided in your packet in a document.
Some will.
Second.
Any discussion, Fred?
Financial impact.
There is no financial impact. It's a self-funding program. Actually, right now, I'm glad you asked that question there, is each student pays fifty dollars to take winter school, which is significantly less than summer school, but they're allowed to take up to two courses. We do not charge them per course, we charge them fifty dollars to enroll, so to speak. Right now, at forty-four students with three coordinators, including some training of the coordinators on the software, we're actually running a profit, which I don't like. I'm not looking to make money off of this. I'm looking to self-fund a program that is for the usefulness of students, to help students succeed. We're ahead of the game by about two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second, are they going to need to have some sort of a laptop, Chromebook?
Those are all provided here.
So we provide them, they take them home?
No, they, like I said, they have to take all their assessments here. They can do work at home. If they need to do work outside of school, they can do them on off days. We have a calendar set up with the three coordinators because they're mandated as part of the contract they sign to be at school for three hours during the week. Now, some of the coordinators have a two-hour block and a one-hour block because we have the late bus. Other coordinators have three one-hour blocks. So pretty much, any afternoon, you can find a coordinator to, that will be after school. And so if you don't, so, and if it's not your coordinator, they're not going to unlock something for you, but if you need a place to work, you can go there. We have a place here in the library where they have access to computers, where we have our normal after-school program running for two hours, Monday through Thursday. So they have, they have resources. We're not, you know, if they're short on resources as far as computer access goes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bob?
Looking at this, I think it's a great idea. I like the innovation of it, that people are thinking about ways to improve things, particularly for students. And I'm encouraged to hear what the result is, so.
I'd be happy to come back and, I was hoping for thirty students, just because it's the first time, but we got forty-four and some started signing up late when they saw that their friends were signing up, so it wasn't as not cool. So I'm anxious to see the results myself. Because it's not, and that's often the fear, is that it's a cakewalk. It is not easy, this Edgenuity program. So not all students pass, but a very large percentage, in my experience, have.
If I can just add, and I need to jump in on Chris, this is a success-based program so students can find success and not meet failure at the end of the year. And the teachers and the coordinators have more control over the academics than a remedial course over the summer. So they can pull out what is needed for mastery versus taking a six-week summer school course at Bridgewater-Ranham, and we don't know who the teacher is or what was lost. So this is a real success-based program instead of a, and some kids would see it and some parents would say, it's punitive, you go six, you fail the class, you go for two hours a day and sitting in a hot classroom and learning some things that might not correlate with places of failure. This is a very success-based program.
It was done through the coordinators with the teachers to make sure that the most important aspects of that course, the question being, what would a student need to know to be successful second semester in your course? And what would a student need to know for you to consider them having mastered the first semester?
Chris?
I just want to add that I think this is what education's all about, to look at, to look at what you have, to change things if it's necessary and for students to become successful. So I wish you well on this.
Thank you.
Just to diggy back in that, the accessibility of this program for the kids, I think, is awesome and the innovative nature of it is very encouraging. And yeah, I'm just, I've never heard of something like this and it's great to hear that we're figuring, picking outside the box, so to speak, on something like this. Great.
Well, nothing's better than if they are failing, that's a bad thing, but at least they know right up against it, instead of waiting till summer to take it all over and you're in the building, so I think it's awesome too. Anyone else? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Get that, Michelle.
Summer reading smackdown.
And this is more of an informational thing to help promote literacy. What we're doing is a summer read smackdown. You may have seen the posters around and basically, teachers and students are recommending books to the library and we have a card over there that's actually pretty empty. I'm pretty happy about that. Because they're taking the books out and students, faculty members, take a book out, they fill out a bookmark that rates it on a scale of one to five, talks about things like readability, appropriateness and so forth, interest level. And then what we're going to do in April, well, before April, the committee gets together and we're going to pick sixteen of those books. There's a whole wall of them out here that have already been put forward to be on the, in the selection committee out on the main street. And they're going to take sixteen books, they're going to put them in a March Madness-type bracket. And then what happens is students and teachers, but it's more student-heavy because it's about the students finding something that they want to read to increase literacy. And then the books are put against each other. So say, say Mr. Simonak has The Canterbury Tales. He goes first, he stands up, he's got thirty seconds to explain why The Canterbury Tales should move forward, why it's a good read, why people would want to read it for the summer. And then say I have Of Mice and Men. I take thirty seconds, I stand up, I explain my piece about Of Mice and Men, and then everybody votes which book moves forward. And so the books all move forward through the bracket until you get one winning book. That book is the summer read, the whole school summer read. And then from there, I'm moving towards doing something called interdisciplinary days at the beginning of next year where instead of the very first day you come in and start hitting kids with syllabus rules, stuff like that, or come back to an assignment on a book that you may or may not have read, so you might start the year with a zero because you didn't read your book. Instead, they come back to the teachers, putting on lessons designed on something in the book. So say we read Codename Verity, which is a book about female pilots, British pilots in World War II. One's a pilot, one's a spy, they're friends, one's caught by the Germans, she tries to free her. So you have the math department talking about secret codes and having kids decipher codes and learn how to write codes. You've got history talking about the historical aspect. You've got science talking about what you can do as far as writing implements and flying instruments and things like that. So instead of coming back to a test that you take to prove that you read the book, you get involved in something that has to do with the book that the teachers are interested in and the students may be interested in. So that's more of an informational thing, that's what's going on. If you want, I can extend an invitation to you to come view the summer read smackdown. When it happens, you get some, we get some food, we sit here and we hammer it out and come away with one book. And then we deal with a local bookstore to try and get a deal on it or the library for the students. And with luck, depending on the book, we always try to make some kind of deal with the author.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
I think that's another great idea, and again, that just goes to show that there's a huge thought process on how to keep kids involved and I appreciate that and again, I wish you well.
No problem, thank you.
Isn't it nice to do something that's awesome instead of be voting and talking about budgets and negative business?
Right. We write him up at the end.
He's the closer. Okay, you got your one. I'm sorry, Ellie.
I just want to inject my two thoughts. I love this idea. I love to read and I can remember sitting in history class with Mr. Fox and he'd be yelling at me, what are you doing? You're not paying attention. Oh, because I'm reading a book, Stephen King or whatever. And summer reading killed me. I hated it. I hate being told to read this book that I'm not interested in. So I love this idea that you're getting the kids involved in choosing the books. Read something, see what's, you know, what's good and get other people's opinion. I love that. Because like I can read five books in a week, it's ridiculous. But, and that's what it always was for me. I loved to read, but being told I had to read this specific book that held no interest for me was horrible. So this is a great idea, I love it.
Thank you again, Chris.
Please share the invitation with us. Please share that invitation.
Chris, do you have that YouTube video that Mr. Dempsey threw out? Could that be shared anywhere?
Put that on the link to the invitation.
That would be awesome.
I'll look at the link to the invitation. You have one, and the teachers, I mean, now I got to finish.
You got him back up.
Now I'm whittling into the two years.
You left it on, I know.
Careful, last time I talked to him, he taught me how to score wrestling.
We talk about teachers and how hard teachers work and what they're doing and everything. This idea was brought up and the English department ran wild with it. Before I knew it, because we were talking about an idea, hey, you know, we could do this, before I knew it, one of the English teachers, Mr. Dempsey, created a video for it, the summer read smackdown video, the tournament of books he put on there. But I will definitely share that with the invitation. It was in, if you go onto the website and go into the archive, it was in last week's newsletter that you can click on it and it'll play for you. But it's a good video, but I'll include that.
And the newsletter's awesome too, by the way. Okay, this is a nice, easy one to do too. This is Acceptance of a Gift. Dear Mr. Simonak, the United States Coast Guard reached out to me a few months ago with a desire to help support girls' sports. They are offering to donate new goalie equipment for our field hockey program valued at twelve hundred dollars. The equipment will display a Coast Guard logo. I would like to request the school committee approve accepting this donation. Sincerely, Bob Rogers, Athletic Director.
Motion to accept.
Some moves.
Second.
Discussion?
Have we reached out to the Navy or Rami yet?
Take a picture. Be a little competitive.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, academic school calendar. Oh, these, wait a minute.
Thank goodness.
Judge, you can go ahead on the second grade field trip.
Oh, okay.
Will you?
There's no paperwork for the second grade field trip. I just wanted to bring it up to you, to let all of you know. Second graders throughout the district at the three elementary schools on March fourteenth will be going at twelve-thirty. will be going at twelve-thirty, they'll all be viewing Rosie the Riveter at the Zitierian Theater in New Bedford. It'll be the first time that all, all the schools get to go together. We've, we're pretty much nail-solid on the transportation piece to get them back in time, to hit the buses when they come back. But it was the, it's an example and it's, it used to be something that was done in Whitman-Hansen a long time ago where you'd have grade-level pieces for every student at a grade level throughout the district. So we're trying to bring some uniformity, we're trying to bring some efficiency and we're trying to bring an experience that they can do. The Zitierian Theater in New Bedford is a pretty famous theater and it has a, it has a very good learning program attached to all of their shows. So there's a study guide with it, there are all these pieces with it. So every second grader will go on March fourteenth to this. They'll also bring two nurses, just because that's what the nurses felt that there was needed, so that'll have coverage for that.
It's not anything you're looking for us to vote?
No, I just wanted to let you know, so the hope is to continue it and the hope is at different grade levels as children progress that they get to know each other a little bit instead of, "I play for Whitman" or "I play for Hansen" or any of those things, just to build a little community at younger levels as they progress and get older.
I would entertain a motion to send Mr. Farrell with them.
I might go, yeah, I know the area.
Brad, did you have something?
Little decals, a panther decals or something that we could possibly find in the budget to hand to the kids? In other words, we're all Panthers?
We're trying to start something like that. So grade two, grade four, grade six, grade eight, you don't just meet your, your person from across the tracks at freshman orientation.
Yeah.
Something worth trying.
Yeah, but no, that's a good idea, yeah, yeah, it's something.
We'll try to do that, too. They can remember that.
Yeah, just to build that, build that early and young, thank you.
Thank you, that's an awesome thing. School calendar.
So in your packet, you have two calendars. We talked about it, I think in January or maybe even December. That next year could be a year that we have an extended winter vacation. We've provided you two and I know some folks have had some different feedback. I'm looking to continue a discussion, have a vote on a calendar either this meeting or the next meeting. I'm not in any necessary hurry to vote the calendar in, but I know that, that Mr. Howard had some conversations with some folks. We've gotten some feedback back and forth. Mr. Boyce had some conversation with some folks. So I wanted to bring it to, to school committee and say, "Hey, look, these are the two, the, the dates, one with an extended vacation, one without." Cost savings is weather-dependent, believe it or not? If it's an extremely cold winter, we could save, what'd you say?
Depending if you put the schools down, this school wouldn't close, but all of the other five schools would if you closed for the two weeks. Depending on what the weather is, you could save anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars by shutting them, reducing the boilers to the fifty-five degrees that would be needed. But again, that's weather-dependent. If it's a couple of years ago, it was very cold, you have the ability to save more money. If it, if it was like this past holiday season, it's negligible, it's negligible.
Okay, this is nothing that is date-sensitive.
No.
We can do it at another meeting because one of the people that wanted to discuss this with the committee had to leave, so I, in, in all fairness, I entertain a motion to table this.
Sure.
Till the next meeting.
I just did want to, you know, make perhaps a little statement.
A motion and a second, right? You got that? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred.
I know we would save money on one hand by not having to heat the buildings. How much of an impact would that be to youth groups that use the buildings on Saturdays? I know, you know, they're used to one Saturday being gone during vacation.
Yeah, they wouldn't play, so we'd have to talk to them, yeah.
Would it be an impact and perhaps a hardship on some of the kids, number one? Number two, we could also come back early.
Sure.
You know, so to speak, a day or two early. And number three, a hundred and eighty days is a hundred and eighty days. The kids are still going to go the same amount of school, but now we're just pushing them out into June a little bit.
And it depends on whether, I mean, again, depending on whether we go extended, we don't come back till January sixth and we have six days out in February, March because of snow. And you're going a little bit further. On the flip side, it, it, that's why we wanted to bring it to the committee early so that you could have conversations with your constituents to talk about what they want and you would have an informed decision. Just didn't want to drop it to you in March and say, "Hey, there's two options here and you have to make a vote."
Once every seven years, this conversation comes up, when it falls, usually on the Wednesday.
All those in favor of tabling? Thank you. Next up, subcommittee, warrant, subcommittee, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January thirty-first, two thousand and nine.
No moves?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that was nice and easy. Policy, subcommittee, I don't believe there's been any policy changes. Facilities met this evening, Fred?
We met this evening, we went over the Capital Matrix. We went over the Hansen Warren articles that were voted earlier. We will be trying to prioritize for the FY nineteen what's on the matrix and only hand to the towns more specifically for, well, and bring that forward at our next meeting.
Thank you, any questions for Mr., Mr. Small? Legislative update?
Little bit going on in the Senate. Senator Chang Diaz is no longer chairing education out of the Senate, it's now Senator Lewis. He has a region in his district. And in speaking with a few people in his office, one of his policy advisors, he is very open to new ideas and has the mindset that the state has to do a better job of funding education. So there's a little article about him in the Globe, I'm gonna say a week ago.
A couple of days ago.
It's only a couple of days ago, seems like it was a while longer.
I think it was only a couple of days.
Like a week, like last Monday or something, a week ago on Monday? But anyways, you know, he has, seems to have a commitment to fund education. I don't know how far we'll get, but we'll always be trying.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Small? Off the mic, no, okay. Pilgrim area collaborative?
We, we had a last meeting early February. We're doing the treasurer evaluation. Our next meeting will be next Wednesday, next Thursday, sorry. We've been doing very well. The executive director asks us all, if we can, that are appointed from the different school committees, to please stay and commit to going long-term as much as we can. We've got a good base for a group that's been around only a handful of years or less. And so they like the stability or she would like the stability in, in having us. So I'm looking forward to being reappointed, although we're not going to get that far right now. But that's about it. And we meet next Thursday.
I'm sure there'll be no fight on reappointing you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? Okay, dates to remember, I want you to remember, March sixth, we have a school committee meeting scheduled. We are not meeting because there is a meeting going on that we're, a bunch of us are going to to discuss chapter seventy and a bunch of different funding for schools, so it's a court meeting, so we're not having that meeting. The next school committee meeting is March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. As you heard this evening, we're going to be discussing the assessment. That's our drop-dead date and what the assessment's going to be to the town. So anyone, we would encourage people to attend the March thirteenth meeting, seven PM, here in the library. March twenty-ninth is Early Release, Pre-K to Twelve Professional Development Day. Also, Conley School is having their annual basket auction on Thursday. March fourteenth, the two thousand and eighteen, at the Whitman Middle School. The doors open at five, the auction begins at six-thirty. It's a silent auction and it's also a live auction. They are accepting any donations, whether it be baskets or auction items, to do silent or live. It's a fun-time event. I've been to it, I know a bunch of committee members have been to it. So should you like to attend, if you have any questions, you can contact Karen Downey, the principal, and she will be glad to fill you in on anything that's going on. Mr. Boyce?
And on that, I've asked the JFK Library to donate passes for this. And you all know and I keep saying it, you're more than welcome to come. And just to, to Dr. Jones, I'd be happy to help on the Whitman-Hansen TV news and broadcasts. I was on the radio club when I went to this high school. As second on radio, that's, you know, the guy doesn't look the most handsome.
Mr. Boyce, do they have FM radio then?
The AM was coming in fine.
Doesn't like, you know, any?
You had to keep it really mellow because I had a morning show. I think we probably played more Beatles than anything.
That's awesome.
It was fun, it was a lot of fun. And congratulations on the whole, whole program.
Go ahead.
Just before we adjourn, I've been checking the weather and superintendent's going to make a two-hour delay call to the committee right now, so that'll go out, you'll get a message, everybody else in town will get a message. There'll be a two-hour delay in Whitman-Hansen tomorrow morning. We're looking at three to five with the bulk of the snow coming in after two AM, clearing out around six or seven, but now they're saying snow through ten o'clock, it might be light. So to help our facility staff, we're going to do a two-hour delay and the message will come out, but I wanted you folks to know. And I know Ms. Burt just got, she's going to tweet it out right now, right?
I was actually going on my Snapchat.
Okay, so everyone watching, understand, the superintendent's telling you there's a two-hour delay, everyone but Mara. Fred?
I'm out.
Facility for next, next meeting. Do we want to meet, say, at six-thirty with the only thing on the agenda prioritizing?
Sure, sure.
So you could post that, Michelle. The, the next school committee meeting on the thirteenth, we'll meet at six-thirty for facilities.
One agenda item is the priority.
Prioritization, prioritizing the Warren articles and, you know, from what you guys have and I think a half hour should be plenty.
Yeah, there's only like six of them.
We're not having a meeting on?
No, next Tuesday, we definitely.
Next Tuesday. Oh, and remind everyone, we are meeting next Tuesday at six-thirty.
All right.
Keep in mind, Michelle, you've got to post that.
Executive session.
Executive session, yes.
Chris?
Can I say, so one thing, grab your gavel, you might actually want to use it on me this one time because I don't want to totally rehash the budget discussion, but one quick thing. So as a committee, reflecting on some of your comments and Mr. Jones's comments, can we give these guys a little bit more latitude on how they're going to paint the picture of the impact of some of these cuts? We started to go down this path of that à la carte, you know, every X-hundredth. I don't, I don't think I want that, I don't, I'm not going to speak for anyone else. I want you guys to do your job as educators and be able to just,
I agree.
As you get information from the towns, use your discretion as to maybe how to present what that could be from an impact. That, I, I just don't want to leave.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be a little bit easier and better. You'll still know, you'll still know what the cuts are, but I think a little latitude.
Because I think we started to somehow, we ended up at a very granular and a...
Yeah.
I agree.
That's not why I want to go.
It was, Chris, I wanted to make the point that every one percent on assessment equals two hundred to two hundred and five thousand dollars. That was my point. I don't care how you do the menu, I just want it known.
And we might not even need a menu.
Assessment starts at sixteen, say we set it, and I'm not encouraging that. I just want everyone to know. Every one point counts for two hundred thousand and makes a severe impact on student teaching and learning. And that, as you can see, is very, very important. So it's not like we're talking, we talk these millions-of-dollar numbers and it's all or nothing. I want everyone to understand the impact of that because I'd like to see this gallery full saying, "Teach our students, please."
And I just, perhaps I didn't articulate my thoughts. I'm not looking for the, you know, hey, if we do two percent, four percent, you know, et cetera, on down the line until we hit a zero level funded budget. What I'm asking is to take what our level services are, become as great as you can to provide the same level services for less money, taking into impact what we've asked for increases, insurance is going to be a benefit, or what other, any other way we can think of to somehow save money. And present that. For me, I can't vote anything less than the services that we've been providing. How we can get to that recipe hopefully is going to be as a less expensive box on the shelf, so to speak.
Thank you.
Then, I think what we need to do is have the public aware, if, okay, because I think a lot of things have to fall into place for that to happen. If that doesn't happen, this is what the potential impacts are. And that's, I think, the doom and gloom that we need to see as well, but just as, as a matter of that. Not as a matter of making decision, or at least for me, of making a decision on an assessment.
And as, as we prepare everything, understand that our charge, too, is making sure it's equitable across the boards in both towns and each, all students are represented in, in what we do, so.
One hundred percent. I think all ten members of this board have one thing in common, we all support teaching and learning in the very best that our students can get, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I know it's been kind of a thing, I'm pretty sure that the boys are moving on, I think they want.
Sixty, sixty to fifty-seven.
So consequently, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.